All right, we are live.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Caitlin. And ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Newbury Report, City of Newbury Report zoning Board of Appeals for the Agenda Meeting of September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty one. We have a published start time of seven P M. But as is typical, we, in the sort of Zoom environment, we like to give a few minutes after the start time, just to allow folks to log on and get themselves settled. And once we do, I think we'll probably have a start time of, say, seven oh three, seven oh five, so a few more moments. And we'll kick things off and we'll move through the meeting agenda, which is available in the City of Newbury Report zoning Board of Appeals website. And it will begin with our roll call, our public hearings, and then we'll go right into our published hearings for this evening, two of which we have requests for continuances. We'll take care of those first, so that anyone who might be logging on to be heard in connection with those will have the opportunity to know that we are going to continue them so that they do not have to listen in for the duration only to find that out. So just another moment or two, and I'll I'll join you back and we'll get things started. We'll introduce our board, establish a quorum and jump right into the business of the Newbury Report Zoning Board of Appeals for September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Okay, looks like the time is now seven oh one. I see that we have about eleven attendees. We're gonna get things started just so that we can be respectful to everyone's timeline. My name is Rob Champetti. I'm the Chairman of the Newbury Report Zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome. If you're just logging on, this is our zoning Board of Appeals hearing date of September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty one, with a published start time of seven P M. If you haven't already, I encourage you to go to the City of Newbury Report website or Google City of Newbury Report Zoning Board of Appeals. It will take you to the link that will get you to our agenda so that you can follow along. All of the materials that are being referenced this evening will be put up by our city planner, Caitlin Sullivan, who will be putting up every slide so that anyone who's watching via Zoom and following along via Zoom can follow along and see the materials that are being referenced. So without further ado, I'm going to begin by calling our role. And once we do, we'll establish a quorum. I'll go over the sort of the lay of the land, you know, basically the rules of the road for Z B A hearings for those that are new to it. We'll, we'll then jump right in and start our process for this evening. So calling to order our City of Newbury Report Zoning Board of Appeals, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty one. We are going to begin by calling the role, and I will just ask members of the Z B A, please respond when I call your name in the role by either saying here or present, and we will figure out whether we have a quorum and can proceed with the business of C B A tonight. Mr. Mark Moore.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Stephen Delisle. Mr. Ken Swanton.
Here.
Mr. Walter Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Gregory Bennet.
Present.
And Rob Champetti, I'm present. That's five members that are present. Just for the members of the public that are, that are listening in, we require at least four members of the Z B A to be present in order to have a quorum. We have five. Our, our, our voting members this evening will be Mr. Moore, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon, Mr. Bennet, and myself. And let me just take a quick look here. We, having called the role, we can establish that we have a quorum and we'll proceed to the public hearing. Before I do, I just want to take a moment and introduce those members of the panel that are on this evening. I'll begin by introducing Mr. Mark Moore, who's our Vice Chair. Mr. Stephen Delisle is our secretary, although he did not at least initially respond. So he may or may not. Andy, do we know if, if Mr. Moore is, he's not going to be present this evening?
He's with us.
This is Mr. Yeah, this is Mr. Moore. I'm here, but
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant Mr. Delisle.
Yep.
Yeah.
We had expected him, I think, to be here. He's not here at the moment.
Okay, so we will, we will make sure that we include Mr. Delisle if he does. Once he logs on, we'll make sure that he's included in the quorum.
I think he's Yeah, I just want to say this is Ken Swan. I think Stephen sent a note to us all saying that he would not be able to make it tonight.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. I hadn't seen that yet. So that means that Mr. Delisle will not be present for this evening. So that the, the members present will be myself, Rob Champetti, Mr. Moore, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon, Mr. Bennet. So moving on, and thank you for that, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Ken Swanton, Z B A member, Mr. Walter Shannon, Z B A member, and Mr. Gregory Bennet, Associate Member. In addition to our panelists, we also have Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner, and of course, Mr. Andy Port, our planning director, also keeping the minutes, our keeper of the record this evening and every evening is is the, the, the incredible Ms. Gretchen Joy, who will write down everything that all of us say. So to that point, if I can ask that anyone who does choose to speak during the public comment section, so that Ms. Joy can keep our record and keep our minutes for any member of the public to refer to, ourselves included, and any others, we ask that you kindly just give your name and your address so that when we get to the public comment section, it's clear who's speaking and, and we can record that properly. Again, my name is Rob Champetti, and I'm Chairman of the Z B A. So with that, we have established a quorum. I'm pleased to have, to introduce the board. And without further ado, we will now get into our C B A agenda for this evening. Starting first with two matters that I believe have, we've received requests for continuances. We'll get those dealt with first. First is twenty-two dash twenty-four Olive Street LLC care of lease attorney Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC. The application is a special permit for nonconformities. We've received a written request for a continuance, and as is typical for our board, we always extend the courtesy of, of granting such continuances unless there's some prevailing reason not to, and there certainly isn't in this instance. Attorney Mead, if you're, if you're on the Zoom call, do you wish to be heard, or may we proceed on your request to continue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please just proceed on my request to continue.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. Members of the Z B A, we have a request to continue the matter of twenty-two twenty-four Olive Street LLC. And Andy, do we have a date? And I know that we do. I just don't seem, I can't seem to lay hands on it. What's the date that Attorney Mead is requesting?
September twenty eighth.
Oh, thank you, Attorney Mead. So the applicant has requested a continuance to September twenty eighth on the matter of twenty-two twenty-four Olive Street. LLC, members of the Z B A, I will call up the role on the motion to continue that matter by the applicant's request. First, let me ask, do we have a motion to continue in a second?
So moved, Mr. Moore.
Seconded, Mr. Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. For the second, we have a motion made and seconded by Mr. Moore and Mr. Delisle, calling the role, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swan, Mr. Delisle. Absent, I'm sorry. Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five of the affirmative. The eyes have it. The motion carries. The matter is continued. And thank you, Attorney Mead. Moving on to the next matter that I believe we have a request for a continuance on, and Andy, forgive me, is, is this two seventy-six High Street is, have we received a request to continue that as well?
Yep, it's my understanding.
No. Caitlin, we have a request to continue for thirty Winter Street to nine twenty twenty-one.
Not, not two seventy-six High Street?
That's a public hearing for tonight. I'm not sure if you're gonna take the two continuances first.
Very good. Then moving to the next request for a continuance, we have the matter, applicant's name, Eric Primack, thirty Winter Street. It's a special permit for nonconformities. We have a written request to continue. Do we have, Mr. Primack, if, if you're on the Zoom call, do you wish to be heard, or may we proceed with your request?
He's not expected to be present tonight, Chair.
Thank, thank you, Caitlin. Members of the Z B A, we have a written request to continue the matter of thirty Winter Street. And Caitlin, I'm sorry, the date again?
Nine twenty twenty-one.
Nine twenty-eight twenty-one, calling the role. Well, pardon me. First, do we have a motion and a second?
So moved, Mr. Moore.
So seconded, Mr. Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Moore on the motion, Mr. Swanton on the second, calling the role on the motion to continue. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five of the affirmative. The eyes have it. The motion carries, and the matter of three Winter Street is continued to the, to the meeting of September twenty eighth. Moving now to our first public hearing, which leaves us with two public hearings this evening. So members of the any attendees to the, to the Zoom Z B A this evening, if you were here for either twenty-two twenty-four Olive Street or thirty Winter Street, please note, those matters have now been continued. You do not need to stay on this Zoom call any further, but do please return back on those return dates and log back in so that if you, if you wish to, to speak and be heard, that your comments can be included in our deliberations and in our public hearings. Moving now to our, our full public hearing, this is the matter of Christopher and Holly Ragusa trustees care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC. It is the application for two seventy-six High Street, a special permit to remove later additions on accessory barn and move to a different location on the lot. Attorney Mead, you have the floor for the applicant.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman Costa, on behalf of Christopher and Holly Ragusa trustees, who are the owners of two seventy-six High Street. With me here this evening is also Scott Brown, who's the architect on the project, and Eric Sturgis, who is the preservation consultant on the project as well. This property, we are here for D C O D special permit, as the chair suggested, to remove later added additions from this barn and relocate the barn on the lot. The property is located, and you can go to the next slide, please. The property is located in the R two zoning district and the demolition control overlay district. Includes a single-family structure and a freestanding barn. No work is proposed on the single-family structure, which was constructed around eighteen fifty. The barn also dates to approximately eighteen fifty, but has had some later added additions, which we'll talk about later. Both structures are listed as contributory on the district data sheets. The property is eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-four square feet, or ten thousand are required. That includes ninety point five feet of frontage where ninety feet are required. The lot is a fully conforming lot on High Street. The barn is currently located ten point eight feet off the southern lot line and near the middle of the property, back to front. The proposal is to remove the later added additions to the barn, move the barn towards the rear of the property, still within the zoning dimensional requirements, and then construct in addition onto the barn. The removal of the portions of the barn and the movement from one location to another of the property is considered demolition under the D C O D. The applicant has been to the Historic Commission, who has issued a report to the board. That, and that was in May of this year. To go to the next slide, please. So the barn was built in around eighteen fifty, according to the district data sheets, and is described as a carriage house. There is no Form B for this property. The district data sheets consider the house and the barn to be contributory to the district. It would appear as though a portion of the rear addition on the barn was added between nineteen fourteen and nineteen twenty-five from the sandboard maps and early assessors map, which I'll talk about in a minute. After a review of the relevant deeds to the property, it appears the structures were built between eighteen forty-nine and eighteen sixty-three. In eighteen forty-nine, the then owner of the premises, Thomas Emery, who also owned the adjacent portion of land, deed to the land now known as two seventy-six High Street to Edwin Grostner, a physician. There's no indication in that deed that any buildings existed on the land at that time. However, in eighteen sixty-three, by the time Grostner conveyed the property, Newbury Port has split from Newbury. Grostner had died, and this is, and his estate conveyed his descendency to Henry Merrill. This deed is at book six six two, page seven, and it includes a reference to the buildings thereon. Therefore, it would appear that the structures on the property were constructed between eighteen forty-nine and eighteen sixty-three. The property has had few owners. Aside from the original Emery family, the property was owned by the Merrill family, where it remained from eighteen sixty-three until nineteen seventeen. It was then conveyed to Edith Bartlett. The Bartlett family owned the property for over a hundred years, until it was conveyed to the applicants in twenty twenty. A descendant of the Bartletts still live in the property. So the barn does appear in nineteen hundred nineteen oh six, nineteen fourteen, and on the nineteen twenty-five maps. If you go to the next plate, page, please. So if you look at this plan, you can see High Street to the left. It's the second lot in. And you can see the barn right there, near Andy's cursor. So this is the nineteen fourteen assessor, uh, sandborne map. And the next slide, please. Then we have the assessor's map from nineteen twenty-five. This, if you go down to the bottom of the plan, and there you go, right there is this property, and you can see the barn again, which has the addition on the rear. So if you go to the next slide, please. So the commission determined that the removal of the later added additions would help preserve the barn into the future. And Aaron is going to talk about that in a minute. Commission commented that the original proposed redesign of the structure was too ornate and requested the applicant to simplify its design, which is done, and Scott will review that. The commission was concerned about the relocation of the barn where the applicant originally proposed on the west side of the property. So I'll talk about that in a little bit, but originally, the proposal was to move the barn to the rear and to the west, the entirely different side. So the applicant has changed the proposal to remove, to relocate the barn and move it directly back in the same plane as the existing barn. So it's not as suggested by the commission, but it's certainly along the same plane. And you'll see shortly how it's still visible and has a relationship to the main structure. So we've provided a current conditions report from Aaron Sturgis of Preservation Timber Framing, Inc. And I'm going to turn it over to have Aaron review the fact about the newer additions, which are causing harm to the original barn, and the removal of those will help preserve the barn in the future. So Aaron.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great, great. If we could go to the next slide. The original barn is a carriage barn. It definitely dates eighteen forty-nine. That timeframe works perfectly. The additions that are added to are illustrated in the next slide. If you could go to the next slide for us. You can see an addition on the back. You can see that the side that on the front view, which is the lower right front elevation from the first garage door, then the second garage door. So that is also an addition. So the carriage barn is really everything in that lower right-hand corner to your left from the dividing line. The next picture will show that as well, but I wanted to show you the drawing and the elevations because the original carriage barn is on a failing foundation, but it's better than the foundations, which are almost non-existent for the additions in the nineteen fourteen, nineteen twenty-five era. The next slide, if you could. So here you really see a stark difference between the foundations. The original foundation is also, you know, inadequate, but certainly better than the little frost peers that are, that are holding up the back shed. And then on the lower right-hand corner, you see the garage door, which is at grade. There's no foundation at all. And if you look up along the line between the doors, you can, you can actually see quite a large hump in the roof line, and that is indicative of the later addition, which didn't really line up with the original carriage barn and actually has a different plane of floor because it's, it's basically on the ground. Unfortunately, when we looked at these additions, even though, you know, nineteen twenty-five is a long time ago, they were failing and they actually have a negative impact on the original carriage barn. The original carriage barn is a timber frame structure, fully mortised and tenanted, and quite a neat little structure unto itself, really self-contained carriage barn. And its best use is in a different location. I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that as well. So it needs considerable structural repair, largely because of the additions, the fact that they are not on the same type of foundation has kind of pulled and pushed the original carriage barn around. And then the rear addition, they actually cut out a structural post and cut out some of the studs that were original to the original carriage barn to gain entrance into the L, and that has obviously compromised the roof line and so forth. All repairable, but certainly the, the best way to fix the original earliest timber frame structure is to remove the later additions, and it brings it back to its original form that goes with the house because they are contemporary to each other. I hope that makes sense to everyone. And then do you want me to talk a little bit about the move at this point? Or do you want to go on?
Yeah, I, I think, go ahead, Aaron, and then
Okay, so when we talk about doing a good positive restoration, we like to put the carriage barn on a new foundation. Its best use for the property and how the barn is sighted from the street is to move it back, and the best way to fix the structural issues that are a part of this carriage barn is to put it on a solid foundation. If you're going to put the effort into preserving the barn, you want to make sure that it's on a really good foundation. So we actually, our, our role here would be to remove the additions that are, that are hurting the original form, then pick the building up as a unit on steel and roll it to the new foundation. We roll it over that foundation and onto a nice level surface, and then we do the structural repair. Sometimes, and I think we'll have to do this, we have to stitch some of the walls back together in order for the move to work perfectly. But that's because of the damage that's occurred over time with the back addition specifically, because they had literally cut out a structural post. But it seems a little counterintuitive that you would do the repair after you're on the new foundation. But in fact, it's the best way to have the building as level and plumb as possible, and we have a control to go to, which is in fact a new foundation. So when we do the assessment and look at all of the things that are involved with repairing and, and moving the building, we have a much more accurate idea of the size of the original carriage barn. We have the exact foundation size based on the timber frame that we have meticulously measured that remains intact. So we have all the information we need to put the carriage barn back into its original form. And we place it on a new foundation and make it a lot more usable and promote its best use on the property. So that's essentially what we're thinking about doing. We use a professional building mover. There's no risk at all of the building decaying or falling apart in any way. But we do have some work to do to make it structurally sound. And I know Chris and Holly are very interested in doing that. And an important part of that is to get it on, you know, a really good foundation and make it whole again. So that's the idea there. What am I missing, Lisa?
So I think that when we get to the site plan, Aaron, we'll talk about the location and the, okay, and, and how it is moved to that and the least risky way to do that.
Yep. I will just say that in its current stat state, it is unsound. I mean, it is these foundations that are on the appendages, if you will, the Ls in the, in the back addition are really yanking on the original frame. So we'd like to get this moved onto a solid foundation and get the structural repairs done to make it, you know, much more usable. It's, it's not a usable building per se right now. You could store a few things in it, but it's, it's, it's underutilized because of its condition.
Thank you, Aaron.
You bet.
Go to the next slide, please, Andy. So as we've said, the proposal is that the demolition involves removing the later added addition to the barn while the original barn stays intact. Move it to the new location will have a level new foundation, and then add the proposed additions to the barn to be to the rear of the structure and subservient to the original structure, which Scott will talk about in a minute. Functionally, this changes will allow the barn to become a safe and useful and active accessory building once again, while preserving it for long-term future use. And then constructions, constructing the foundation further back presents less risk than moving the barn twice in order to construct a foundation within the footprint of the existing location. And next slide, please. So as I noted earlier, we appear before the Historic Commission. The commissioners had a consensus that the divine, the design features on the renovated barn were too ornate, and that prior to the location, the prior location proposed to move the barn to the back left corner was unacceptable. To that end, they didn't settle exactly on how much the barn could be moved. The report does say one to two feet. I think if you hear the commission's discussion, there was a lot of discussion about that particular issue. To respond to the Historic Commission's comments, the applicant has redesigned the barn to make it more simplified, like the original structure that you've seen. And we're relocating it on the same visual line. So if you could go to the site plan, which is next, please, Andy. So right here is the site plan, and you can see the original structure under the driveway line there. And the proposal on where to move the barn to the rear. And in a moment, Scott's going to go over the details, but you can see that we have located the barn well within the required setbacks under zoning. And it is of a sufficient distance to allow the movement to occur once with the rebuilding of the foundation. And Aaron, I don't know if you have anything else to say about the movement of barn further back than what the Historic Commission has recommended.
I, I don't. I think this is in line with their intent. I think that was their concern is that they wanted to be able to see the barn from the street. I do think that moving the barn back in its original form and having the addition to its rear gives it the original form that went with the house. So it's actually more in line with the, the original fabric of the intent of the property. And you notice that the barn is smaller because the appendages are coming off. So it looks a little bit different than the shadow line that you see. But that's because we're restoring the original timber frame and adding a small addition to the rear, which is not visible from the street, that allows its best use, you know, for storage. And, and, and right now, it's kind of small. You can't really put a car in it. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott now. And Scott, if you would like to go through the redesign.
Yeah, well, thank you, Lisa. Scott Brown, the architect for the project. If we just start, Caitlin, if we could just go back to the site plan, if you will. Thank you. So one of the first things that you'll notice about this proposed site plan is that is that the house has an odd skewed relationship to the, to the side lot lines. And the barn and its existing location is, is parallel to the side lot line. Because of this, the back of the house is, is oriented towards the barn and really has no relationship to the backyard. The current position of this barn really hinders one's enjoyment of the yard from the perspective of being in, in the house. And this is a great underutilized yard. It's lined with mature trees, which we intend to keep, and it really has sort of a nice sense of privacy. And our, our plan is to position this barn, our plan has always been to position this barn in a spot that gives us maximum flexibility to make use of the entire backyard and to open up view corridors from the house to the entire, to the entire lot. So next slide, please, Caitlin. So these are our proposed elevations. And as Attorney Mead had already stated, these represent a vastly simplified design from what the Historic Commission first saw. So in the lower right-hand corner, this is our proposed front elevation. And this now looks a lot like it did in, in the nineteenth century, including at the time when it had a cupola. We're proposing to put a new cupola on this. The other three elevations that you are seeing here, the back, rear elevation, the top right-hand corner, and both the left and right side elevations on the left side, they show this sort of one-story subservient addition that we're adding to the back of the, you know, original box. We're setting back the sidewalls of this addition. We are changing the cladding, sidewall cladding, and this is really about having a distinction between old and new and, and really respecting the form of the original barn structure. Next slide, please. So this is the existing street view, you know, courtesy of Google. And we've included this really to sort of validate the accuracy of And we've included this really to sort of validate the accuracy of our. Our renderings on the following page. Next slide, please, Caitlin. So these are two renderings, existing condition rendering shown at the top. And if we could just go back to the, back to the former slide. So this has a slightly different viewpoint, but I think you can all see that, you know, our renderings are, next slide, please. That our rendering here is, is very, is very accurate. And, you know, the bottom, the bottom image here, this is our, 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 you know, our, the proposed barn in our new proposed location. So one of the concerns of the historic commission is that when we were originally proposing to put this in the back left corner of the lot. They were concerned that the public was no longer going to be able to enjoy this historic structure. So I think with this proposed rendering. On the bottom of this sheet, I think it demonstrates, clearly demonstrates that. We're all going to still be able to enjoy this and we all have a clear, are going to have a clear view corridor towards it. I would also argue that this, you know, bringing this back to what it looked like in the 19th century. From a design standpoint is, is clearly an improvement over what we're seeing. In the top rendering. And the other thing I want to point out here. Is that we're actually, we're making this smaller. And, and how many times in, in Newburyport is there an applicant before this board? Asking to make something smaller and we're certainly doing that here. So our proposal is. For a smaller footprint. Next slide, please. And, you know, finally, we've included this sheet because I sort of, I think it clearly industry, you know, illustrates. The drawing on the right is our existing floor plan. And this sheet sort of clearly illustrates, those hatch walls, the walls that we're proposing to remove. That third bay that Aaron spoke about, that is not original to the barn that we're removing. And on the left side, this is our new proposed floor plan. Which shows that smaller one-story subservient addition that we're putting back. On the back half of this structure. And with that, I will hand it back to Attorney Meade. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott. So under the demolition control overlay district, the zoning board has a couple of findings that they have to make. One, essentially, and, and it's an odd application of the, of the ordinance because we're not removing the barn, we're moving it. So. There's a finding essentially that the historic building of structure retains no substantial remaining market value or use, but. Of course, we are keeping the, the barn itself. We're asking to remove portions of it. The board is aided in its determination based upon the historic commission's advisory report. And in this instance, the historic commission says it did not oppose the removal of the later or poorly constructed sections. They did indicate that the removal of the later added additions and the relocation of the barn to the solid foundation was appropriate. To enable the barn to exist long into the future. The report from the historic preservation expert. Aaron Sturgis, and as he has said tonight, says these additions hide what is a very nice historic barn. They seriously compromise the structural integrity of the original barn and should be removed. And then the original barn can be repaired and saved. The right side is on simple piers, as Aaron has said, and poorly constructed and detracts from the original form of the structure. The second rear addition along the back eve. Is on minimal piers of cement blocks and lightly framed and negatively impacts the earlier structure. Both additions seriously compromise the structural integrity of the barn and should be removed. The structure sits on stone and partial foundations that are crumbling. The first floor framing has been greatly altered with a little, little original structure remaining. But there is hope, as Mr. Sturgis says, that the original barn can be saved. And the later additions should be removed and it's feasible and advisable to move the barn to the rear of the property and place it on a permanent frost wall and slab. So as to these items, the historic commission has agreed. The applicant is proposing to adaptively reuse the barn by reincorporating it into an area of the backyard that allows more full use of the yard. While still preserving the barn. The renovations will bring the barn back to life to an integral part of the property once again. While the commission disagreed with moving the barn more than one or two feet, the applicant is of the position that such a stance by the commission is unreasonable. Indeed, as Mr. Sturgis has said, moving the barn once rather than twice, and he can highlight that again if you need to. To place it on a new foundation is less risky. The goal is to preserve and adaptively reuse the barn. From a constructibility point of view, it will be preferential to construct an entire new foundation and then move the barn on to the new foundation. The mere shift one or two feet does not accomplish that goal. By moving the barn is proposed to a more fulsome, a more fulsome use of the yard can occur, as Scott has said. And indeed, the barn offers an appropriate backdrop to the yard. Additionally, given the new location that the applicant has proposed. The barn can still be seen from High Street and still runs along the same plane. Of the original barn. Once again, it can become a useful and accessories, used accessory building on the property. And the historic significance of the barn in relationship to the house and the property will not be lost. You can go to the next slide, please. The general special permit criteria are also applicable under this section. And I will go through those a little more quickly because they really apply to use, which is not changing. So section 10 H7. Are the general conditions related to special permits. One, the requested use is listed on the table of use regulations and here. The, as noted, the property is located in the R2 zoning district where a single-family use is allowed by right. The requested use is essential or desirable to public convenience and welfare. Again, the use is a single-family use is allowed by right in the R2 and therefore by its very nature. As been determined by the city to be desirable. Requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. The continued use of the single-family use. And the movement on the property from one location to another will not create any undue traffic congestion. Or unduly impair pedestrian safety. In fact, there will be no change with that criteria whatsoever. Requested use will not overload the public water drainage or sewer system. Here, in fact, none of that will occur because the use won't change. And in fact, the footprint of the structure is becoming smaller and therefore. There's a greater amount of open space on the property. Any special regulations for use are set forth in the special term permit table are fulfilled. And in this instance, there are no special regulations. The requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. Here, the use is a single-family use. The accessory structure is entirely consistent with the neighborhood and the use is allowed by right. So will not impair the integrity or character of the district as to the use, quite frankly, nor with the movement of the barn, but that's not the criteria. The requested use will not by its addition to the neighborhood cause an excess of that particular use here. Again, the use is not changing. The proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and 10 of the ordinance. Again, the use is a single-family use on the property is not changing. The accessory structure exists and will be smaller and that's not changing either. The proposed use will not be conducted in a manner so as to emit any dangerous, nauseous, injurious or other objectionable. Impacts. Here, the renovation of the barn will be completed in a manner that is not dangerous, nauseous or injurious. Will not emit noise, vibrations, smote or dust or any other form of environmental pollution. I would point out that the applicant has submitted letters of support from the most immediate neighbor to the east, Ms. Judith Cowan. Also, we are aware that you have received a letter of opposition from an abutter to the rear. Please know we have spoken with the abutter and her attorney. The applicant has full intentions of replacing the fence in the rear with a six-foot fence. For the applicant will be trimming the dead branches off the large tree in the rear which overhang the abutter's property. I'd remind the board again that the applicant meets all of the dimensional requirements of the ordinance both before and after. The requested relocation is not seeking any relief from the board for that particular matter. And with that, we request the board issue a DCOD special permit. And approve the modifications to the barn and the relocation on the property as proposed this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Meade. All right, members of the ZBA and Attorney Meade on behalf of the applicant, having. Completed the presentation, we will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and go to the public comment section. I'll ask our planning director, Andy Port, to put up the slide, which he's just done. This is the instructions for public comment. For those of you that might not have. Done this before, we just asked that you kindly keep your comments, you know, within two minutes or so. We don't have a very long docket, so you know, we use our discretion so that every voice can be heard and every sentiment can be included into the process. With that, we just ask that you click the bottom of your Zoom screen, raise your hand. We will recognize you by name. We then. Ask that you kindly unmute your mic. In the bottom left, you'll see a microphone icon. If you're not familiar, just click it so that it's green. Mr. Port, our planning director, will unmute your mic from our end. And then we ask again that you give your name and address. And then feel free to speak your mind. You do not have to be for or against necessarily. You're welcome to, but don't feel as though you have to come into. A specific column. We just take comment as it comes. Seeing one hand, Erin Genovia, Genova. Ms. Genova, I will recognize you for public comment and, and if you could kindly unmute. Ms. Novus' mic, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. This is actually Attorney Douglas DeShane from Finneran and Nicholson. Representing Erin D. Genova. Erin is here with me where we're sharing the screen. As, as was stated, please recall, Ms. D. Genova owns the property at 30 Collins Street. Which is actually the property directly behind 276 High Street. As was mentioned, my client did issue a letter in opposition to the proposed relocation. Back in August of, of this year. In sum, Ms. D. Genova. Respects the historical significance of the bond in the historic commission's position. And would like to see the bond stay in its current location. Additionally, she does have reasonable concerns about how relocating the barn. Will adversely impact her property and her enjoyment of her property. However, subsequent to that, my client sending the letter and as was stated by Attorney Meade. We did reach out to the applicant and his attorney. To see if my client's concerns could be addressed by the applicant. Unfortunately, despite reasonable efforts by both sides, we were unable to reach an agreement. On resolving Ms. My client's concerns. So she is actually here this evening, Mr. Chairman, to register her opposition. And so with the board's approval, I'd like to allow her to speak for a minute or two.
Of course, just, we just asked that she kindly give her name and address for the record, though I know you've already given that.
Sure. Hello, and thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Erin D. Genova, and I'm located at 30 Collins Street, Newburyport. So with that being said, I do not support the barn move. I am the owner directed directly behind 276 High Street. I purchased the property in July of 2020. I knew that there was two historic structures directly behind it and I never anticipated them to be moved or rebuilt or shifted on the lot. I understand and respect the recommendations of the Newburyport Historical Commission that the barn should not be moved. I work as a real estate consultant and understand the general goal of the owner's proposal. However, with that in mind, I would hope the applicant and the zoning board would also consider my viewpoint. And work with us to, for a mutually agreeable solution that works for everyone. I would imagine that the current owner would not appreciate an unexpected two-story structure relocated 27.5 feet from their primary house either. So hopefully everyone can appreciate my concerns. My additional concerns with the proposed location are as follows. The two-story carriage house will impede the review, rear view of my backyard, which is only actually seven feet from the property line. 10 feet from the, the farthest point from my house, from that lot line. I basically have little yard as there is. I purchased the structure not expecting a historic barn to be moved closer to my lot line, thereby impeding my line of sight. Placing a carriage home 27.5 feet from the property line would also negatively affect airflow. And limit the amount of natural sunlight, making my yard darker. I'll be subject to noise, dust, debris during demolition of roof shingles and siding, as well as construction noise. The placement of a two-story barn or carriage home that close to my lot line will adversely affect my property value significantly. I would recommend that if the board is so inclined to allow a relocation, I would just ask for the following conditions. Number one, relocation of the rear line of the barn 45 feet from our property line versus the proposed 27.5 feet. This would provide an additional backyard for the applicant. Of 30 feet rather than the requested 50 feet and would provide space for the driveway that they have as well. It would also fulfill the Newburyport Historical Commission's desire to maintain the street view of the barn. Number two, plan on applicant's land, landscape screening consisting of coniferous trees of adequate size, minimum of eight to 10 feet. Sufficient to reduce the visual impact accordingly. Three, replace and repair the existing fence with the width of property and remove the large tree. On the applicant's land that overhangs the fence onto my property. I would at least expect them to trim all the branches overhanging onto the driveway as they do land on my car as I do not have a garage. Number four, place construction dumpsters a minimum of 60 feet from the rear lot line to avoid noise, dust and construction materials and debris. A few other items I'd like to mention that are not included in my letter are pest removal. Do you know if the building department would recommend if they're moving that existing structure, would they? Propose for a pest removal service? Is that something that's typically done? I'll keep going. So trimming the tree versus removing it, any pieces that are hanging over onto my driveway side. And one thing that I wasn't asking for, and it wouldn't be a deed restriction, but verbally, the client had mentioned, the applicant had mentioned they don't plan on putting any structures directly behind. The lot line other than moving the barn. So to have that in writing, if they could just not put anything within, you know, 30 to 40 feet would be ideal. And that is my request. Again, I agree with, you know, the NHC. I do not. I do not agree with moving the barn. And it will negatively and adversely affect my property value and my enjoyment of my property. Thank you for your time and appreciate you listening to this, this matter. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. D. Genova. And counsel, do you wish to be heard further in, in regard to this or may I move on to any other comments?
I think you're talking to Mr. DeShane. Is that correct?
That's correct. Attorney DeShane, are you still with us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. No, we're, we're finished. Thank you very much.
Okay. And thank you, Attorney Meade. Okay. Thank you, Attorney DeShane and Ms. D. Genova. Anyone else wish to speak in connection with this? With this matter, I'll recognize Glenn Richards, chairman of our Newburyport Historic Commission. Mr. Richards, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks very much. Glenn Richards, 6 Ken Street, speaking for myself here tonight, not the, not speaking on behalf of the.
My apologies, of course. So I, I meant to just recognize you as simply Glenn Richards.
That's, that's perfectly right. You know who I am. Anyway, so this, the report is the, the, with the commission. And it's been, Attorney Meade did, I, I think she fairly accurately reflected what the report said. Anyway. Very briefly, I just wanted to thank the applicant and the architect for responding to the comments made in the report. I think that. I'm very happy to see that they were willing to reconsider initial plans. I think the, the new plans are significant, are a significant improvement. You know, in, in the perfect world, I would have loved to have not seen it moved as far back as they planned to move it. I. I think I understand why they want to do it. It'd be great. You know, I think technically they might probably not have to move it quite so far back to, to still, not just move it once. But I certainly understand, you know, wanting to keep the movement down to a minimum to avoid damage and so on. So anyway, you know, like I say, ideally be great if, if we move so far back, but overall. The plan is a major improvement and I just wanted to express my appreciation for the, to the applicant. And, and all those involved for, for doing that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Recognizing Ms. Melissa Rowe. Ms. Rowe, if you can hear me, if you could kindly unmute your mic and Andy, if you can unmute Ms. Rowe's mic. Ms. Rowe, you have the floor.
Sure. My name is Melissa Rowe. I'm at 28 Collins Street in Newburyport. And I'm just commenting that I oppose moving the barn due to its historic nature and I agree with the NHC. And if the barn is approved to be moved. I would hope that the suggestions and recommendations submitted by 30 Collins Street and myself should be implemented. In fairness. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Rowe. Anyone else wish to speak in connection with this application? Recognizing the hand of, and I don't have a full name, I just have DS, D. Strout. And forgive me if that's a mispronunciation. Actually, that has disappeared. Actually, that has disappeared. I do not have a, ah, there we are. So D S T A U R T. You could go ahead and unmute that mic, Andy, and you. D. Stroud, you have the floor. If you could just give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Don Stark. I live at 46 Oakland Street. And my concern is I about the property. My concern is only only slightly where the location of the barn is going to be. But more is what is the ultimate plan for the property? There were comments made during the presentation about opening new corridors to the entire lot. And the goal being to get the barn out of the way to enable more fulsome use of the yard. And I think it's another thing was said, there's greater amount of open space on the property. It will create a greater amount of open space on the property. So my concerns are only that that this is just to get the barn out of the way to do other development. And wondering if there's anything the applicant is willing to say about the ultimate plan is for the property as far as all this open space that we're creating and ways we're enabling. What else is planned for the property? Is this is this to make room for for the development and hopefully not a multi-family development like some of the others we see around our neighborhood popping up? So those are my concerns.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak in connection with this application? Let's see, seeing no further hands. And Mr. Stark, if you could go ahead and just lower your hand for us, just so we see that, you know, not looking to be heard again. Seeing no further hands. Thank you, sir. I going once, going twice, I'm going to close that portion of the public hearing. And we will go ahead and move now to the segment of the public hearing, which was questions from the board. And we will begin with with questions from the board from members of the ZBA, starting with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chempetti. I'm going to start with the easy one that was suggested during comments. I just wanted the applicant to comment on any pest control that would be included when dealing with the building that's largely not been in use for a while and kind of dilapidated. So what goes into to preparing for any disturbances that might happen when you do something like this?
Sure, Mr. Chair, Lisa Mead on behalf of the applicant. As part of the demolition permit application, the applicant's required to do a number of preliminary.
You want all through your shoes too, if they have.
Somebody needs to mute.
Yep. Somebody's. Hello, it looks like someone's microphone is on.
You know, itchy crap.
Hello, Mr. Richards, it looks like your microphone is on. And if you could just mute Glenn Richards' mic.
Yeah, I have done so.
Great. Okay, if you can keep, you can go ahead and continue.
Sure. Lisa Mead again. So as part of any demolition application in the city report and practically anywhere else, I think it's actually a building code requirement. You are allowed and required to do a number of things to a structure. You're required to remove utilities. You're required to do a an abatement review, and you are required to do a pest control. I'm not sure how many days. It may be two weeks, it may be 30 days, but there's a whole pest control measure you have to put in place before you start to remove the barn, and that's a requirement of the city. And I don't know, Mr. Chair, I wanted to address a couple of the other comments, but I can do so maybe during the question period if they come up, or I'm not sure how you'd like me to do that.
Attorney Mead, you could go ahead and address them as they've already come up. If if you wish to, that's fine.
Sure, I just, there's a couple of things I point out to the to the board that as Scott Brown noted, and you can see in the photographs, this property is surrounded by large mature trees, both along the rear property line and the side property lines, which are not going to be disturbed by the movement of the the proposed movement of the barn. And so the idea that somehow the barn being 27 and a half feet away from the rear property line is going to impede light and air movement in the rear of this property against the next property isn't quite accurate, given the actual mature trees that exist. And more importantly, I want to comment related to the development or potential overdevelopment, if you will, and concern that the gentleman from Oakland Street had. So this property is currently occupied by a tenant. And so one of the things that the applicant wanted to do was to take care of this barn before something happened to it and make sure that it was secure and do that all at one time. The property has just over 90 feet of frontage, which is not which is not sufficient to put a two-family or certainly not a multi-family house on it in the city of Newburyport. And so it will be single-family, single-family, single-family all day long. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. And I have a couple more questions. If I could, Mr. Chairman, the for anyone on the team here, I would just like a little more information on the jacking up process in order to move the barn. How I know if you bring in a special, there's a special contractor that does this. How high does this barn get jacked up to get it on beams to roll?
Well, I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Sturgis, because that is certainly not my area of expertise.
Understood.
Sure. Can you hear me all right?
Sure can.
Okay, so the jacking process is very methodical and formulaic, and in order to move the barn back onto a new foundation, it's pretty straightforward. We add steel in both directions to pick up all of the timber frame. Because timber frames are rigid structures unto themselves. They're relatively easy to move from an historical perspective. Buildings are moved all the time in Newburyport and everywhere across New England. So the precedent for moving it is certainly there. But the process is pretty straightforward. I-beams go full length in both directions, and then they go on to another I-beam that has what's called skates on them, which are bearing surfaces that roll the steel along the other steel. And that basically lifts the barn up about 14 inches and moves it safely back. The concern about keeping it in place is it requires a much higher lift, a much more invasive lift, and a much more. Well, I mean, it's it's all dangerous. I mean, you have to be very, very meticulous and careful about this, but lifting it straight up to dig under it is considerably more labor intensive, more risky for the barn, and certainly more risky for the contractor and more expensive than simply moving it onto another foundation. That said, the barn will stay together because we'll stitch it together after the additions are removed. So it's not going to fall over. It's not going to topple left or right or anything. It's just very safely moved, but it is easier and more and more in tune with its best use to keep it as low as we can to the ground and move it on to the foundation. So you're really only elevating it a foot and a half, maybe two feet total to get it on to the new foundation. Of course, you have to be above grade to meet code on the new foundation, and parts of that barn are nowhere near that currently. Certainly the additions are not. But the so the elevation of the barn itself doesn't change dramatically, just meets code. But it is safer and easier to move it, you know, lengthwise than it is upwards. I hope that makes sense. And 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 basically, I do use a very specific contractor for that work, and that's all he does, and he's very, very good at it. Does that answer your question?
No, that that does. For the most part, and and then I'm curious as to a little more detail, what foundation is needs to be built to have this restored barn sit?
Well, if we're going to put that much energy into the barn, you're doing a full frost wall. And in this case, it's a slab because a lot of the flooring in in the original barn is not original anymore. It's been it's, and I will, I'll just add one side note. All of the additions have been modified again and again, like in the 40s and the 60s. They're 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 coming apart at the seams because they're just stick frames. But so so I believe the intent, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, is to do a perimeter frost wall to, you know, that's code compliant and a slab to have the barn sit on.
Yet, yes, that's correct, Erin.
Yeah.
So and just going to stick on this. So the I understand the cost component of it. In order to keep it, keep the barn in the same location, would the are there two choices? One, to jack it up higher in order to try to do the more difficult foundation work or just roll it back?
Right, that's the two options.
Those two options, right?
So yeah, those are the two options. If you're if you're forced to do the foundation under the building, it's considerably a different project than just simply rolling it at grade on the steel. And you have to dig, you have, you're basically doing everything underneath the building, which is, you know, it's it's problematic.
Understood.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions. Any further questions?
Very good. Then moving on to in still in questions, we will go to Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, just following up with Mr. Moore's line of questioning there. So I get it that lifting it way up in the air and then working under it is expensive and dangerous. But could you just slide it back like 10, 15 feet? Dig a new foundation and then slide it forward and put it on it? Wouldn't that be a lot less risky than putting it up in the air and trying to work under it?
You could move it back and do it that way as well. That's another option.
Okay, just want to make sure I understood that. The other question I had, I've heard, you know, it's, I've heard the historic commission referenced an awful lot in tonight's hearing. And, you know, both by the applicant many times and by some of the butters. But when the chair of the historic commission spoke, I was a little confused. I guess he spoke for himself, not the commission. But I guess there were two outstanding questions as were put to us in the staff report that that I wanted to ask about. One was, you know, is is the new addition is, I'm sorry, is the is the barn renovation being done following the secretary's guidelines? And you know, I see the pictures and they're all well documented and they're all annotated. I was just wondering if the chair of the historical commission could comment upon. And I realize it was fancier and earlier version. This one's better. Does this one now meet you guys feeling for the right renovation? Could I could I put that question to Mr. Richards?
Andy, you can unmute Glenn Richards' mic and Mr. Richards, if you wish to respond, you're you're welcome to.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. Okay, my and my profound apologies, I could have sworn my mic was muted earlier. Anyway. It gets complicated. The 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 standards taught when you're dealing with restoring something to the way it was before. Some of the objections we had to the original plan, I don't know if you folks saw on the ZB, so the original plan, that the overall design of the of the carriage house or the new barn was going to be quite substantially different than what the original was there. And there was, in this case, there was document your evidence. That's what the standards do look for. They don't want what someone thinks what might have been right or what might have looked, for example, the cupola. If there was no evidence that there was ever a cupola on the original, it would have been not recommended or be recommended not to add something like that, you know, just because you like the way it looked, whatever, it wouldn't be historically accurate. In this case, it I don't, I don't, you know, I'm away in Vermont, actually, at the moment. I don't have all the original drawings and stuff to remember exactly what they showed us of the original, but it looked like what the current plans are are fairly faithful representation of what the carriage house originally looked like. As far as, you know, so that so that addresses the design part. As far as the location, there was considerable discussion about that, and 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 that the standards do talk about the relationship between the primary house, you know, the the residence and the accessory structure. And and the commission was concerned about that. So and I think I believe that's reflected in the report. There was, you know, we didn't want to lose that sense of relationship and that, you know. So when I spoke earlier, my apologies if it if it was confusing to anyone. I was speaking just on my own behalf, basically just to I was very happy to see that most of the recommendations were were followed through on. But, you know, there is that sticking point about the location. Ideally, you would want to keep the relationship between the primary structure and the accessory building as much as as possible, you know, might maybe adjust it a little bit, but basically keep it, you know, approximately what it historically was or or would have been. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I I'm basically in a nutshell, you're saying, you know, the details and whatnot of the building look fine now. But it's just the location that that are giving you guys pause. That's kind of what I'm hearing as far as the proposal on the table.
I should be careful here because you know what, we, you know, we haven't, the commission has not met to look at the new plans or anything like that. So I don't think it'd be appropriate for me to, you know, try to imagine what the commission would say about them. But I know earlier based on what the original discussion was, though, I know that the that these I would be very surprised if anyone had a problem with the design as it stands now, but probably people would be concerned about it being moved so far back. It that would be a good a likelihood, but I, you know, obviously I can't say for sure.
Okay, I appreciate you being as honest as possible. I'm confused, though, because the report from the historical commission says rather bluntly, the original structure should not be moved back to the rear of the lot. So I'm confused. Did they say that or not?
Yes, we did say that.
Okay. All right, it's very confusing the way you're describing it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I probably should, you know. Sometimes I should follow my advice. I sometimes get to keep my mouth shut, but the I I was very pleased about the other aspects of it. I felt it was, you know. I I hope that they don't have to, you know, they can do it in a way that doesn't move it so far back. And and I it sounds like your questions are exploring that possibility. And and I maybe I didn't make it clear enough that ideally that that is what both myself and the commission would would obviously prefer. You're quite correct that the report which summarized the feelings of the commission as a whole was pretty straight about that.
Okay, I appreciate it very much. I thought the rest of the presentation was very thorough and clear. I have no other questions. Thank you.
All right, very good. Let's see. I believe we are moving on to Mr. Chen.
Chair, I've got no questions. My cohorts have asked the questions that were on my mind. So I've got no further questions.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chen and Mr. Bennet.
I have my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. And I too have no questions that haven't already been addressed, so we can close the questions from the board portion of the public hearing and go into deliberations. In deliberations, of course, we need to tailor our deliberations around the criteria that is that's before us on the request. This is a special permit and a special permit under the DCOD specifically. So I I believe all the members of the ZBA are familiar with, there are let's see, there are nine criteria that must be met under the DCOD. That's section 10 H7 of the Newburyport zoning ordinance, and anyone who's listening in can also reference this on the city material. So we'll go into deliberations, starting with Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chempetti. Well, as I think Mr. Richards tried to, I think, or did convey as a member, not a member of the committee, but as a as a resident, I think there are a lot of positives to take from from this proposal, as we've seen, especially with the design of the barn. You know, taking down the later added structures that that are tearing it apart is a good thing. Repairing it for future generations to enjoy is a great thing. Bringing back historic nature with a couple of additions, as we saw in the historic commission report, I think adds a lot of character to it. And then, you know, even with the consideration to just move it straight back from the original idea to move it up, you know, back into the left quarter movie, but there's some a lot of positives here, but I I still struggle. There's some po- a lot of positives here, but I, I still struggle, um. Which I think Mr. Swan was on board with that a little bit too with. The historical report, um, and the fact that the structure had specifically been listed as contributory. On the data sheets, they thought was unusual and significant. Um, so there's always talk about accessory structures and it's even included in the, the presentation today. I think it was the, the building, the barn itself was referred to as an accessory structure and. It's true, while it is an accessory structure. The reason that we're here is that it's contributory structure from a historical standpoint, hence the DCOD issue, uh, issue that we're involved with, so. One thing that the board felt and that I, that I'm, that I'm kind of agreeing with here is that the historical relationship is what makes it. Contributory with respect to distance from the house. And I, I haven't found that. Moving the new, the proposal to move it straight back, um, versus back and to the back corner. Um, really makes a difference on the sightline to the house, and I'm just eyeballing here, but with the smaller structure. And trying to go on from the front corner of the barn to what the corner of, you know, the back protruding portion of the house, it's. I don't see where, even moving it straightforward, uh, closer to the original position, it's, it's impinging on. Many views from the house, um, admit any, admittedly so that I haven't been in the house to see this, but just from looking at it, uh, from my standpoint. I'm having a hard time finding that if, if it was left in place, it would just be blocking too much of the view from the house. Nothing would change with the yard, um, and it would keep the historic nature. For my, a, a spatial relationship, um, intact, so. I'm struggling with, I'm still struggling with that, especially when there's other ways to do this again. A lot of positives to this, without a doubt, I, I think the. The design of it is, uh, you know, I think it's perfect. I don't think I would change the design, but I'm struggling with moving at all. So that's where I am right now.
Mr. Chair, I know this is deliberation, but I just want to make a correction so that everybody is speaking off of the same set of facts.
Mm-hmm. Okay, feel free to turn to me.
Um, Mr. Moore, you commented about, uh, the location of the barn. Um, um, Andy, could you go to the photographs of the barn for a minute? Or even the, yeah, the photographs or the drawing, the old drawings, whatever. Um, so just to be clear, the existing section of the barn that's being saved is the left-hand side. Not the right-hand side. And so the comment relative to impeding the backyard, if you were just to pick the barn up and. Repair it and put it back down is not accurate because we have moved it over in the back a little bit. Um, as we've moved it back because of the angles. So I just wanted to clarify that.
That's fair, that's fair. Yeah, that's, that's fair.
Okay, so I just, that, I thought that was an important fact that.
Okay, was there anything else to turn to me?
No, that, I just wanted to make that correction.
All right, very good. Um, let's see, I believe we are at, uh, in deliberations still, um, Mr. Swanton.
Um, you know, I think, um, Mr. Moore already. Described some of, uh, what I'm struggling with on this one, so I, I don't really have anything else to add beyond what he's already said.
Okay, Mr. Swanton, thank you. Uh, Mr. Bennet?
Yeah, uh. Is Mr. Shaggin in here? Would he like to weigh in, or I'll be glad to go?
Either way, you go ahead, Mr. Bennet, I'll go next.
Okay, I'll be glad, I'll be glad to do that.
I apologize, I skipped Mr. Shaggin, uh, Mr. Chen and I, Bud, you're, uh, you're next, I believe.
All right, all right, floor is mine, thank you. I, I guess I, I have some concerns with the location of the barn being so far back in the property. Um, with that said, I'm not glued to it going back in the same place that it exists today. And I think it is smart of the applicant to slide it. Towards the lot line, so it, it comes back into view from the, from the front yard, if you will. Um, so I guess my only concern is, you know, it, it looks like we're pushing it back, uh, two or three building. Sizes where one might be fine and, uh. In other words, maybe twenty feet instead of forty or fifty feet. A- a- and that might still meet the, uh, the engineer's requirements that you don't want to pick it up. You know, dig a foundation under it and put it back down. Uh, I, I know that's quite costly, so that's my only concern is that it's, it's located so far back. That it, uh, to use, uh, you know, some of the other architects phrases, it becomes extremely subordinate to the main house. It, it may actually look like, uh, it's not in the same yard. Um, so that's my only concern. I, I think the design is wonderful, I like the, the fact that, uh, again, they slid it. Uh, towards the lot line, so it's easier to see from the street, but, uh. Uh, my only concern is the distance from the original placement. Uh, I'm not, I'm not stuck on the one to two feet. But the, uh, historical commission recommends, but, uh. You know, something in between one or two feet and thirty or forty feet is probably where I'm at. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Uh, now, Mr. Bennet. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. German. I just have a couple of observations. One, I, I, I guess we start, uh. I think we must recognize what we have before us is a. A historic structure that over the years has been. Impaired by shoddy architecturally unfaithful, uh, you know. Uh, additions, not improvements, and that what we have before us is an effort to, one. Uh, to, to take that carriage house or barn, uh, as faithfully as, uh. One can, uh, historic its architectural, uh, significance. And I, and hearing the comments, uh, this evening, it would appear that. The structure, the barn is faithful to its, the historic architectural values, which is a positive. Secondly, it's pretty clear that these additions over the years have impaired the integrity of this. Uh, historic structure and therefore, uh, they had no value and in fact are detrimental and it's appropriate for them to be removed. Uh, third, uh, what we have then left is a structure which is smaller in size. Uh, architecturally faithful to the, uh, building, uh, the, the residence. And based upon the updated plans, uh, relocated such that its visual. Connection with the, uh, home, uh, primary residence on, on High Street remains. So then this gets me to the notion of, uh. What is according to the historic commission, a natural or unnatural relationship between this carriage house? And the primary residence, and that was intriguing to me. It was so intriguing to me that. Uh, I made some anecdotal effort to peruse and walk through our beautiful city. To see if there is any, what I could observe, at least any consistency open or. Yeah, consistency between a main structure and a carriage house. And, and I also tried to find anything in the literature which would support. The notion that this relationship is currently natural. And the relationship moving this barn back would be quote unnatural, according to the historic commission. I found no such evidence and there's no such evidence in the historic commission's, uh, report. So, uh. That being said, uh, natural versus unnatural is somewhat subjective term. Uh, I will, uh, tip my hat to the commit, the historic commission that they have more expertise than I do in this. However, I am troubled that I find no. Uh, anecdotal evidence to support that or any literature evidence to support what would be a natural relationship. Uh, and with that being said. Um, I, I'm not convinced, uh, that that recommendation, uh, is compelling to me. Then I guess I consider the well-stated comments from the neighbors. And, uh, I think what, uh, carries the day for me in this regard is that. Many of the concerns, if not all of the current concerns addressed by the neighbors. Are reflected in the zoning ordinance itself and specifically the side and rear yard setback requirements. Which this application meets. Therefore, uh, we would have a different story if this were to be located within those side or rear yard setbacks, but we don't. Therefore, the county council has adopted a zoning ordinance which has adopted side and rear yard setbacks. Uh, and those implicitly would take into account concerns such as property values, airflow, uh, sightlines. Uh, visual impairments and the like, uh, so, uh. As much as I am sympathetic to the residents' comments, I believe that. Because this proposal is well within the setback, the, the side and rear yard setbacks. I think that, uh, is satisfactory to me, so. Uh, long story short, uh. I guess I disagree with the historic commission here on the, the, the. How far this structure must be, and if we're just negotiating, uh. We're, in my view, we either honor the historic commission and make it one or two feet. But there's no support in the, in, in the record in any way to broker a distance. Unless we're just trying to find some middle ground based upon nothing but what we feel is correct. So that's kind of my observations.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet, um, and, uh, as, um. You know, my comments not so as to not repeat anything that's already been said, I, I have to commend, uh, my colleagues for thoughtful and, and in some instances. Uh, meticulous, um, analysis of what we've been presented. Uh, we as a board are often challenged with having to toil through a lot of the very. Granular detail of these sorts of applications and attempt to, uh, you know, be balanced and fair and also be honorable to the zoning. Uh, ordinance, uh, as well as the, uh, the legal criteria that we must, we must find, however, the discretion is. Um, narrow, but it does exist. Uh, I agree with Mr. Bennet's analysis, uh, to be quite honest, and certainly with the greatest respect. Uh, to my colleagues on the, uh, the historical commission. Um, I, I, I do not disagree with their analysis, nor would I pur- purport to, um, to challenge their expertise. Cause I, I simply do not have a, a credible position to do that. I, I do disagree with the conclusion. Um, for the reasons that I believe are within our, you know, our purview and, and I think all of our expertise that Mr. Bennet had pointed out. I, I am moved by the, you know, I think Mr. Bennet mentioned the architectural faithfulness of the. Proposed plan, I believe it's smaller, uh, and more cohesive, uh, you know, and sometimes we as humans just simply. Distill our thoughts down to just the very basic of what feels right. Uh, with, you know, credibility and attention to the, you know, the, the, the calculus of the detail here and, and I, trying to do that, but I, I simply. I, I simply can't, I, I feel like I can support this, um, and, um. And have to very respectfully and, uh, and courteously, um, disagree with. Uh, my colleagues on the historical commission on this one and, uh, and is equally respectfully. Uh, disagree, disagree with the conclusions, um, of some of the comments of, uh. Of members of the public, though I certainly empathize and understand fully and respect the, um, the positions that, uh, they're coming from. Uh, but the legal criteria is what, what drives us as a board, and so we must rise and fall by, uh, you know, a- along those lines. For better or for worse, so if I'm being authentic to that criteria and making a decision, I have to find that. I, I too can support this for the reasons that I believe my colleagues pointed out, or at least Mr. Bennet had articulated. Uh, so, um, that's where I fall on this as well. Uh, any further deliberations, members of the board, before I close this portion? Seeing, uh, no, um, panelist, uh, interjections, I will close this portion of the public hearing. Uh, at which point, uh, we will, um, uh, we will elicit a, uh, a vote, and if I haven't mentioned this earlier, for those that. May not be familiar, uh, because we run by a, a modified, um, version of Robert Tools of Order, uh, to move a matter. Um, to a vote, a member of the ZBA must make a motion to approve. It does not mean that that member of the ZBA intends to vote in the affirmative or support the application. It's merely the, uh, the technical means by which the matter is advanced, uh, for a second. Uh, and if it is moved, if, if a motion's made and seconded, we then take roll call and in order for an application to be successful. Four of the five voting members this evening must vote in the affirmative. Uh, with that, uh, do we have a motion? I'm sorry.
Um, Mr. Chair, Lisa Need. Um, unless, uh, any of the other three members, Mr. Moore, Mr. Swanton and Mr. Chagnan. Uh, were also so, uh, moved by Mr. Bennet and your comments. And I haven't heard to the contrary that they have been. Um, we would request a continuance unless one of them corrects me if I'm wrong.
No, and that, that's a fair comment, Attorney Mead, and so, um, members of the ZBA, um, I think it's fair when an applicant, historically, we've always tried to do this. Uh, so as to prevent an inadvertent, uh, vote, when an applicant has a right to request a continuance to further refine an application. Taking a straw, a straw poll, um, are there, um. I- are there any members that feel as though they, uh, they can support this application? Uh, I believe Mr. Bennet, if, if I'm not mistaken, it appears, are you. Uh, inclined to support this application and, uh, if you're willing to share that and any other members, um. Just so that we can get a sense for the benefit of the applicant and allow them to make a decision.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Moore, um, two things, first of all, I, I thank Attorney Mead for pointing out my. Mischaracterization of the barn, the fact that it's getting moved back and to the right to improve the visibility from being where it is now. Um, was very helpful, and I found, I also found Mr. Bennet's, um, explanation reasoning. And thoughtfulness in, in his opinion on this, uh, compelling and, um. You know, we have to strive to, to make. Our decisions based on, uh, the facts of the application. The ordinance and, you know, what we, what we should be presiding over and what we don't preside over, so. I thought he made a compelling case and, uh, I think I can move to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, um, Mr. Uh, Mr. Swanton. And this is just a straw, a straw sentiment, if you're willing to share, um, not at all vote yet.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 uh, I concur. With Mr. Moore in part because I don't think, you know, if there was a point to be made by the historic commission, I don't think it came through very forcefully. So I kind of concur with Mr. Moore and I can support it as it is.
All right, thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chen, uh, do you wish to be heard as well?
Yeah, sure, um. I, I, I guess, uh, as I stated, I, I wasn't, uh, locked on the one to two foot location that the historical commission was suggesting. Um, I was looking for, you know, a happy medium, but with that said, uh. I think Mr. Bennet's, uh, arguments were, again, compelling. Um, I, I could also support, uh, the proposal a- as put forth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Attorney Mead, um, having heard the board members informally share their sentiment. Um, do you, uh, do you wish to be heard on a motion to continue, or, or do you, uh, do you wish us to proceed with a, um, with a vote?
I would lo- uh, like the board to proceed with a vote, please, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. Um, okay, members of the ZBA, um, having, uh, concluded and closed our deliberations. Um, I will ask, is there a member of the ZBA who wishes to make a motion, uh, and a second on this application?
This is Greg Bennet, uh. Respect to DCOD, special permit application, twenty twenty-one dash forty-eight four two seven six High Street. I, uh, would move to approve the application.
Oh.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Um, do we have a second on the, on the motion to approve by Mr. Bennet?
Mr. Shaggin will second it.
Thank you, Mr. Shaggin. The, uh, motion is made by Mr. Bennet and seconded by Mr. Chen to approve the special permit. Um, under the D, uh, to grant a special permit on, under the DCOD, calling the role, uh, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, uh, that's five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, the motion carries and the special permit, uh, is approved. Uh, thank you, uh, Attorney Mead and applicant and members of, uh, of our community who, um, who also spoke. I, I wish to thank you for your time and, and, uh, and Mr. Richards, uh, though I know you spoke just on behalf of yourself. Um, the, uh, the input by the board that you happen to chair i- is also the commission you happen to chair is also always valuable to our boards. We, we have an ever-standing thank you, uh, to you and your colleagues, uh, for that input.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of the board.
Very good. Very good. Um, moving now to our, um, last, our second and last, uh, public hearing this evening. Uh, this is the special permit for non-conformities, uh, being brought by applicant, uh, Michelle Simone on behalf of Kim Goulet, five Helena Street. This is a special permit for non-conformities to construct an addition over an existing deck. Uh, we, uh, may we hear from the applicant?
Yes, hi, good evening. Um, my name is Michelle Simone and I am just making a presentation here tonight for my client, Kim Goulet, at five Helena, as you mentioned. Um, we would like to propose to add an additional one hundred and seventy-two square feet of living space by building.
Sorry, Michelle, could I just interrupt? Uh, sorry, just as the host, if you have another device on in the room, if you could, uh, perhaps mute one, just so we don't have an echo.
Absolutely. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
How's that?
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, terrific. Sorry about that. Okay, so, um, what we're showing here now is the existing foundation plan of the house. And the next shot is showing what the proposed framing plan would be for the house. So we are not proposing to go outside of the existing footprint of the home and we're not proposing to go beyond the existing roof line. Um, what, what we are proposing to do, if we can go to the next, um, frame and take a look at the existing floor plan is on the top of the screen and the proposed is on the bottom. So what we, what the, what the, um, proposal is, is to just add a second bedroom to the house, adding about a hundred and seventy-two square feet of living space. Keep the deck on the backhand side. And when we close in a portion of the existing deck, that's how we were able to gain a little bit of extra space there for another bedroom. Um, not adding any more bathrooms, not doing anything to the kitchen or anything like that. Um, and the next shot, we'll see the, um, elevation showing the front side of the house where the front door would be located. The top photo is the existing conditions and the bottom is the proposed. And you can see the roof line is where the addition is. It actually comes down a little bit lower than what the existing roof line is. And on the next few frames, we can see all of the north, southeast and west sides of the house and how it would end up once the build would be complete. And then we get to, um, this is just showing, uh, the next shot is a, a schedule of windows that prop- proposed to be on the house. And then the next photo is the house in its original condition from a neighbor's yard. And the next are the condition of the house at the moment, which is the new bedroom built with the deck on the side. And the next photo after that, shows just another side view of the, the additional bedroom. So the client had gone through the approval process back in February for, um, conservation. And that had been all approved. Um, she had hired someone to help her sort through all the permitting processes and everything and thought that everything had been applied for and approved. And, um, during the process of everything, found out that this last permit had not been discussed and approved. And so here we are this evening, just bringing it forward, hoping we can, um, gain approval.
Very good. Um, thank you, Ms. Simone. Was there anything else you, we, we wanted to add or, or, uh, was there anyone else that you, uh, wanted uh, us to hear from before we, we moved along?
Um, no, I'm here with the homeowner in case any questions come up that someone wanted to direct anything directly to her, but, um, other than that, that's it.
Very good. All right, um, closing that portion of the public hearing, we'll now go to the public comment section. And of course, there's only two attendees, both of whom are here in connection with this, I believe. Um, anyone who wishes to speak in connection with the application, just kindly raise your hand at the bottom of your Zoom screen. We will open your mic and recognize you and please give your name and address if you please. Um, seeing no hands going once, going twice, uh, I will close that portion of the public hearing. Uh, seeing no hands having been raised and we will go into questions from the board, beginning with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. Um, I just wanted to get back to how the construction commenced to the very advanced stage before being before for a special permit. Um, can you go how that, how that timeline worked out? And I mean, ultimately, the homeowner is responsible for making sure everything's taken care of. But how did this get to the point where we're looking at a, you know, sixty percent, seventy percent done project and here to ask for the special permit to do it?
Right, right. So, yeah, it was a surprise to all of us. Um, we, like I said, the homeowner had her meetings with, um, conservation and had everything approved in regards to that back in February. And we met with the homeowner, um, sometime in March or April and came to an agreement about the construction of the project. And we applied for a building permit back on April twenty-second. And we had a eleven hundred dollar fee to pay for the permit, which we did. And, um, we had called into the building department, um, I had an assistant of mine pick it up way back then and it sat in my office for a, a couple of months. And we got started on the work. It was probably June or July. And, um, I had called into the building department because I was putting together a packet that needs to be kept on site for the build with all of the information from conservation. There has to be a packet that's kept all the time with the plans and the permit and everything. So anyone coming on site would have access to it. And going through my files, I wasn't seeing the permit, um, so I called for a copy of it. And we just think that this, I don't know if it led to a question about the processes of it all, but when I applied for the permit, it was in paper form and they have since switched over to computer. And it went down to the zoning department from there, which, um, they realized that this had not been signed off on for this part of the portion. So they shut the project down at that point to say we needed to go through this to have this all approved. And so we haven't been working on it since, just waiting for this hearing to gain approval for this last piece of the puzzle.
Okay, thank you. I don't, I have no further question.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I, I, um, I was kind of wondering the same thing that my colleague, Mr. Moore, just asked, um. I, I couldn't quite follow the story. So was it the building department that kind of, uh, overlooked getting a, a permit here or was it the applicant?
Um, I guess, you know, I think the way the process works is you, you apply for the building permit and then it goes through all the departments in the city hall.
But then it come, yeah.
Yeah. And at that point, it, it, you know, should have or could have been discovered that it, it just didn't get done or didn't get approved at that point. I'm not sure how. The only thing I can think is the transfer between paper to computer or, uh, you know, I don't know. I don't know.
But it, did it come back to you as an approved building permit that you could like stick in the window like you usually do?
It did way back in April.
Okay, all right. I don't know if Andy, if anybody else wants to chime in there from the planning department, just, you know.
Yeah, sure. Uh, well, it's a great question from the member, uh, in light of all of our efforts to improve the permit processes, uh, you know, of late. Um, there has been a transition to online permitting. I'm not sure, uh, that that would be a factor here necessarily. Um, the zoning administrator does kind of keep an eye on, you know, what's happening from her sign offs. So, um, I don't know if Kaylin recalls any details. Uh, we'd have to defer to Jennifer and the, the billing office as to the dates of their sign offs or approvals and, and how they, how that was processed. Um, but, uh, you know, again, I don't want to speak on their behalf.
All right, all right. I, I'll let me move on because, um, one thing that wasn't in the presentation, the little table that shows us the FAR calculation, um, you know, and the dimensional things, um. Okay, there it is. If you could blow up that little section down the bottom there. Um, yeah, down the bottom. Anyway, while they're blowing it up, I, 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 um, you know, we've often gotten advice from the planning department about being careful about overbuilding on Plum Island. Um, but, you know, and I've often objected to ones that go over the guideline of twenty-five percent, uh, floor area ratio. And this one, you can barely read, but the second line from the bottom, this little building is only at seven and a half percent and it's only going to nine and a fraction. So, so that's a long way from twenty-five. So, you know, despite the mess up wherever it happened with the building permit process, um, I usually jump on these things, but I have no problem with people improving or adding on to their houses on Plum Island. Uh, it just, you know, I get concerned when it's overbuilt. But you're so far from the twenty-five percent where you tip it into overbuild that, that I, I really don't have any questions with your proposal. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Um, let's see, moving on to, uh, Mr. Shannon.
Yeah, one question for the applicant, the, um, the photograph that showed, uh, the construction work that was done, the, uh, the building, if you will, in the green. Is that the one hundred and seventy-two square foot addition?
That is only part of it.
So, is, is there more to the left as we're looking at this picture here?
No, um, what it is, is half of that addition was, um, a bedroom that already came out. If you look at the photos, the original photos, there was already a bedroom that came out and we just expanded around it, um, staying on the same footprint.
I might be able to see that a little better on the, um, the drawing that shows the existing floor plan versus proposed. Um, it might be a little bit easier to see. So, yeah, so.
So, see the top photo, that's the existing, that bedroom came out on a deck. And it's decking all around it. So all we did was we kept a portion of the deck and then we expanded out about, you know, a hundred and seventy square feet around the, the current bedroom.
Great. Okay, understood. Thank you. No more questions, Chair.
All right, very good. Um, Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't want to beat it down. I just want to be sure I understand you, uh, you received a signed building permit?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Otherwise, we wouldn't have, we would have ever started work like this without.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure I heard that correctly.
I know, it was.
I think Mr. Swan's point on the the implications of, of the application, we're, we're restarting from scratch here. So I, I don't have a problem with, but I must say, if, for example, this project had an additional bathroom, uh, I for one would have had been in a very uncomfortable position because that would, I would have been, I would have frowned upon that application probably. So, uh, I, I would hope we don't get into this situation again. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Um, and I don't have any further questions, uh, other than the questions that have already been asked by my colleagues. So I will close this portion of the public hearing. And we can go into deliberations. And again, uh, as we deliberate, we are deliberating on the criteria of a special permit for non-conformity. So I just ask my colleagues to tailor their, uh, their deliberations around the legal criteria for a special permit, beginning with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. Um, not encouraging applicants to come in the form of, uh, forgiveness rather than, uh, special permit, permission. Uh, that aside, um, you know, I, I'll take the explanation, um, at its word and, and to get to the, the point of the matter, it's been mentioned by colleagues as far as the, the floor area ratio, uh, it's, you know, it's stay on the same footprint, miniscule and well under the limit. So from a proposal standpoint, um, I can support it. I've just, uh, I just don't want to encourage people just to kind of get started and then come back and ask. So, uh, it doesn't sound like that's what happened, but you know, your ears perk up, but, um, I can support it, um, on the special permit. It's, it's not creating any new non-conformities and I don't see it being, uh, any more detrimental, um, to the pie out or the neighborhood, just, uh, covering up more of the, basically covering up more of the existing deck. So, that's where I am. I support it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, Mr. Swanton.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I too was concerned about looking at a project that's already partially built, but I, I think I'll, I'll take the applicant, you know, I mean, if they got a signed building permit, that sounds like the problem's on the city side, not their pro side. Um, so, um, and as I said earlier, this is such a modest, uh, thing. I, I like being able to support, uh, an improvement on Plum Island. I'm often concerned about overbuilding, but this one is clearly not that. This one does not in, in, uh, it's on the same footprint. It doesn't change much. There's, there's no encroachment on any lot lines. Um, so I can support this.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Swanton and, uh, Mr. Shannon.
Oh, I, I, but you know, the comments made by my colleagues, um, I don't think, uh, there's any new non-conformities. I don't think it's more detrimental to the neighborhood. It is a modest addition uh, well within the fire limit. So, uh, a- as, as previously stated, I can support this application.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Mr. Bennet.
I endorse the comments from my colleagues. Although I, I must say that additional bedroom after additional bedroom after additional bedroom without the addition of bathroom will over time result in a cumulative impact. Uh, so I don't think I'm at that point here yet on this application, given its modest size and overall scale. Uh, but I, 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 um, I, I, I do have that concern as Mr. Swanton does, and I think we all do about, uh, whether we have the appropriate tools here to address uh, development on Plum Island. So, but on this one, I'm good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I, I share the sentiments of my colleagues. I think that this is an appropriate application. Uh, I'm not overwhelmed, uh, in my sentiment in that regard by the fact that it's, you know, the timing of it. Uh, my, I guess I understand that. Uh, but I believe it's appropriate and, and, um, I feel like if it had come to us in this manner before any construction started and then stopped, I, I, I would be supporting it as well. Um, so I too can support it. Um, unless there are any further deliberations, I will close that portion of the public hearing. And, uh, do we have a motion to approve from a member of the ZBA in the second?
I'd like to make a motion. I'm Ken Swanton. Um, I'd like to move to approve special permit for non-conformities for five Helena Street. File on number twenty twenty-one dash fifty.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Do we have a second?
Second to Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Motion's made by Mr. Swanton and seconded by Mr. Moore, calling the role on the motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That is five in the affirmative. The eyes have it and the motion carries. Um, uh, thank you very much, uh, Ms. Simone, uh, you and your client. Uh, good luck to you and, uh, appreciate your patience this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Thank, thank you. And, uh, that concludes the public hearings for our ZBA this evening. Uh, so with that, we can, uh, move into our business meeting. We have the minutes from Gretchen Joy for the meeting of August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Do we have any comments, changes, uh, red lines or in the alternative, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Anyone have any comments, uh, or changes to the minutes? Hearing, uh, no replies. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move, Mr. Moore.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second, Greg Bennet.
Thank, thank you. Uh, was that Mr.'s, was that? Motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Bennet on the motion to approve the minutes. Um, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. The motion carried. The minutes are approved. Uh, moving to the last item on our business meeting. Uh, updates from the chair. Uh, I don't have any updates, uh, but do we have any updates for our planning director?
Uh, I don't think anything. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are questions about, uh, anything that's going on. We did try to loop you in on the, uh, discussion of the ninety-five, uh, quarter zoning, uh, for tomorrow night. But if there's any questions about that or anything else, just let me know.
All right. Um, any questions, uh, for Mr. Port? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I, I don't want to be the kid that asks for homework because you forgot to give it out. Um, but you were gonna, I think, poll on whether we're gonna do our Zoom meetings, uh, by video and include video versus just audible.
Oh, thank you for reminding me. So, um,
I gotta be that guy. I know, but.
Yeah, no, we can plan, um, we can certainly plan to, um, to start video. You know, start putting ourselves on video for the next hearing.
Um, if that's a great. If that's agreeable with everyone, I know where to come up and I don't.
Is, is, is everyone okay with that? Or is anyone, you know, object to that for the moment? Or we can, you know, we can also just wait to go live when we go live.
This is Mr. Swan. I think we should try it. I mean, we're, we're one of the few boards now that does not do it. And I know tonight's meeting only went, well, almost two hours with two topics. I, I do think some of our meetings go so late. I, I think it might help as far as, you know, trying to do what the other boards do and maybe we won't meet, have to meet quite as long.
Very good. All right. All right. I, I have no objection. Andy, why don't we, you know, we'll plan on doing live video and we'll give everyone the option if they don't want to appear on video, you know, by members of the, by that I mean, members of the public. We'll ask that all of us try to appear via video. But we understand that sometimes that's not in the cards. But some members of the public, you know, do choose to stay, you know, with just a photo placeholder. So we can, you know, I'll, I'll let everyone make that choice as they see fit. But we will, as a board endeavor to be live video. Sound fair?
Sounds good to me.
Sounds fair.
All right. Do we have, then, without any further business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Deck it.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor, you can just say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? None opposed. The eyes have it and the meeting's adjourned. So thank you, everyone. Have a great evening. Gretchen, of course, as always, thank you for writing down all the nonsense we all say. Caitlin and Andy, thank you guys for, you know, for running, you know, running these hearings for us and and Mark, Ken, Bud, and, and Greg, thank you as well. So have a great evening, everyone.
Thanks. Nice work.
Good night.